I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark, it's your pleasure to have consent agenda. All in favor?
C.
The next upcoming select board meeting is October 19th at the town hall. Business item number one, investment committee recommendation.
Yes. So I'm Paul Coon. I'm with the investment committee. And this is a fairly simple thing. We've had a maturity of obligation in the portfolio. And we wanted to give you a recommendation for a new reinvestment of that principal. We, before I tell you what it is, we're being mindful that there may be some expenditure coming up for the school roof in the next couple of years. And so anything that we would recommend, we take that into consideration in terms of having cash available at appropriate time for paying those bills. So the recommendation is that we invest $150,000 in a US Treasury note to mature on 8/31/2025. And the interest rate on that, for the time, is 5%.
Move that we accept the investment committee's recommendation and authorize the treasurer to make the transfer. If I may amend that. Sessions, all in favor?
Yeah, I'll give you the... I think we have...
We have it already.
I'll give this one to Carly.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I could just make a quick comment. Paul said we were thinking about having some cash available for a possible expenditure on school roof. Not know when or how much. But what we failed to mention was there's also three more investments that will mature and could be held as cash in the interim between when this one matures. So there's another half a million dollars, really, in, about a half a million dollars that will be maturing in, you know, one in January of this next year, another one in June of next year, and another one in the fall of next year. So that flexibility is built into our recommendation. It's just a side point up.
I believe, and David can correct if I'm mistaken, the roof was estimated around $350,000. Is that accurate?
It may have been last year.
At least $350,000.
The schools were discussing that this fall. And planning for, I think, next summer.
And we had talked about doing an over phased approach. Is that...
They're gonna try to do it in one. They were, we're talking about a two-year program. But now they're deciding maybe more cost factor doing one shot.
Are you talking about next summer being 2024 or 2025?
Four.
I thought I understood that you didn't have it scheduled nine, never get it scheduled, did it for 2024?
I have no idea what this schedule will be, but that's the terms. That's why you're doing it next year.
The property manager on our committee, Steve Kalish, his opinion was that if you didn't have it scheduled pretty soon, within this year, that it wouldn't be until 2025.
But they've been in discussions with the roofing company that's taken care of the roof for many years.
Do they follow our same bid requirement to go out to bid?
I believe they have their own process.
And the other thing that we got discussed in our committee meeting about that, again, Steve Kalish, the property manager, understands a lot of this better than I certainly do, was discussing the point that that the state requires some certain things in the new roof. That it's gonna make it better insulated for less heat loss because of fuel efficiency and all those kinds of things. And given that that is gonna be part of what's gonna happen, if there's not heat loss to the roof, there's gonna build up more snow, which is more weight. And he was counseling, they better have a good structural engineer. If they have a good firm that they're working with, that's probably built in. But he was concerned that the new, the new roof ought to be, make sure that it can handle a heavier snow load than in the past. I'm just sharing that with you.
Well, even more so, if they're also thinking about putting solar on that, which is another weight burden.
Or build a wall.
I know it's the school board's decision and everything, but you guys, you guys have a lot of influence on some things about this.
I think, I personally think they should follow a multi-bid process like we do for expenditures of that side. I don't know what their policy is.
So we're gonna move on to business item number two, Westbach municipal election and state of Maine referendum election warrant approval.
Yeah, this is something we do every single year to, you know, to...
This office assesses the town election.
Yeah.
I move that we approve of the warrant as presented to us. I second it. All in favor?
It's a particular one you need signed. If you wanna start a little...
Item number three on the agenda, discussion, conduct guidelines for elected and appointed officials and town staff and related policies.
I provided to you copies of the invoices from Justin Barry addressing the conduct guidelines and correspondence between myself and Sally, mostly during the month of February and March.
Thank you for providing that. I presume we don't have to take any action?
Can we see the red lines on her comments? Do you have those?
I don't have them with me.
If you could send them tomorrow, that'd be great.
What I provided you was the clean copy that she sent me.
Yeah, I want to see the red lines.
Kathy, do you want me to send those out to all of you tomorrow?
That would be great, thank you. As there, there's no...
Is that all you want, just the red lines?
Yeah, I'd like to see it. The changes. But we, the thing is, here's what my concern is. We voted on the policy manual and then it was sent to our county attorney. And then edits were made. And then we weren't given the final copy after that. So I wanna see really the final copy and then review it.
I wanna clarify, because we were, at the last meeting, we were hopping back and forth between what was referred to as policy and code of conduct. And initially, we started talking about the code of conduct. And that is what I had in my mind mostly during the conversation. I can tell you, we have several policies that we worked with Sally on. The select board rules of procedure, the committee procedures, and the conduct guidelines. Those three documents were reviewed by Sally. And the version that you were given to approve was Sally's clean version. The HR manual has not been sent to Sally at all because there was never any agreement between the board members that you wanted that sent to Sally. So I wanted to be crystal clear about that. That document has not gone to Sally. I will be happy to forward it to her if that's what the board wants.
I think any policy that we're gonna put in place as a town should be reviewed by our town attorney to make sure that we've covered all of the angles necessary to protect us.
And that's why, you've been real clear about that Suzanne, and I appreciate that. But I have not gotten the same type of feedback or a motion from the board telling me to send it Sally. So if you want me to do that...
I think we have, we have adopted that policy by a board vote. They, I have, in the course of my professional career, had the opportunity to read many, many, many personnel policies. I saw, I read that very carefully each time it was submitted to us. I saw nothing in there except the way in which the description of clothing worn primarily by women was described. And that was amended to my satisfaction. There's nothing in that HR policy that is not standard stuff. I don't see any reason why we should pay the attorney to re-go over that stuff. I just don't.
Matt, I can appreciate your level of experience in seeing these through the years, but none of us here are attorneys, and that's why we have a town attorney. And I think it's important that we protect our town as a whole and not put ourselves in front of any obstacle that we don't see coming at us based upon something that was written and not reviewed by our attorney in a policy manual.
My concern is, we voted on this. I would like to know exactly what we voted on. Because how can we...
Submit something.
What you voted on was the copy that I gave you for...
I know, you know what I'm saying. If we voted on that, how do we... We've done it.
So that, so if I, and I would love to have, and if you could ask Carly to find it in the minutes. I know I said in that meeting, when we voted on the policy manual, you said, "We're gonna send, you're sending it to the attorney for review." We've never seen the final document. That, and I'm confident that that was discussed.
Are we talking about the manual?
The policy manual, 100%.
The manual has never been sent to Sally.
Right, and, and we, and I said we should send it to Sally. And instead of implementing it, you...
Yeah, Suzanne has said we used to...
I'm not done speaking.
The board did not.
And, and so we implemented a policy manual, yet we found it necessary to put all these other policies in front of our town attorney. Yet the town policy manual did not go there, which I'm baffled as to why they're different elements. And I believe that we need to protect our town as a whole. And I said it in that meeting that we should not vote on something without it going to the town attorney. And I'm confident you could find it in the minutes and on recorded video.
But what I'm confused about, at our last meeting, you said you would not sign the conduct guidelines until Sally reviewed them.
Till I, till I, till it was acknowledged that it was reviewed by Sally.
And there's your acknowledgement.
That's why, we also voted on a policy that was not reviewed by a town attorney to...
Suzanne, it's not enough for you to say policy.
Policy manual.
HR manual.
It's not a policy manual, it's an HR manual. We voted on the HR manual to implement as procedures on behalf of the town staff that has not been sent to our town attorney. And I, and if we put all of this effort into having it reviewed by the town attorney, I'm not sure why we wouldn't have a policy HR manual also reviewed by the town attorney. I don't, I don't understand what the hesitancy is to protect our community.
So right, we have to get the review and revise sample of code of conduct. That was reviewed on 2/2. Review proposed code of conduct reviewed on 2/28.
Code of conduct.
By our attorney.
Yep.
On 3/1, conduct guidelines again reviewed by our attorney. On 3/2, again reviewed.
This is, I'm asking about the policy manual. I asked about the HR manual.
We were focusing on the conduct guidelines last time.
The HR manual. I apologize, I keep calling it a policy manual. It's the HR manual, or my mistake. I still believe the, the HR manual. I, I would like to see the HR manual also reviewed by our town attorney.
Can we focus on one item at a time? On the conduct guidelines, I just wanna point out, and I will send you the red line version, I have no objection to that. But on the email that I included when I forwarded the clean copy to all of you on March 6th, the attachment clearly says, "Conduct guidelines, town attorney reviewed clean."
So now that I have what I've answered, I have no problem signing the conduct. We'll get it tomorrow. Or do you have it? I'm happy to do it now. Can we also get the HR policy manual reviewed?
I would like a formal...
That's a motion for the board.
Yeah. I want some clear guidance here.
In order, according to Robert's rules, in order to have that looked at again, since it has been voted on, you would, did we vote for it in the first place?
Yes, it was signed by all three of us.
All three of us signed this? So you would need to move that it be reconsidered.
I move that we reconsider the vote of the HR policy manual and have it be sent to our town attorney to follow the other reviews that we've had on all the other policies. Not sure why we're hiding that.
I don't think we're hiding it. Anybody, it's public information, anybody can...
It's not protected. It's not, it's not protected. I, I don't know why we would not have our town attorney look at the document when we did it for these.
Is the, has there been a second?
No.
I don't wanna table it.
Is that a motion?
I make a motion that we table the HR manual for Sally's review. No second?
I'll second table it.
All in favor? Number four, town administrators report.
I don't have anything on my report tonight.
Future agenda items?
I just wanna point out that we need to be talking about the Casella contract soon. I would like to have them at the November 9th meeting, when you'll all be here, if that works for you. Because it's coming up very close to the end of the year. We've had some other issues that were taking our attention away from what we could be focusing on recently. But we need to focus on that.
Yeah, and I have had several complaints from town people in the last two weeks to do with Casella. So I think we've had some issues again. That we need to just...
Did we officially move the meeting tonight? Did that...
I think we moved it. I'm not sure what's...
You said you were gonna check your schedule and reach out to Christine. I will, I have to call. I'm supposed to be, I have a flight coming in on the 2nd. On the 9th, I'm sorry. Let me check on, let me see if I can change it. I will, I will call you tomorrow morning.
So when we're gonna meet with Casella, can you like to invite those people? Just let them know that we're having this contact meeting with Casella? Maybe they can kind of voice their own issues and questions?
Yeah, that's important.
Should we have that here? Or it's at the town hall?
We should do it here.
Yeah, we might wanna do it here because...
That would probably be more comfortable, if the date works.
Well, it's the 2nd, so... Go ahead and move it to the 9th. I will change my flight.
It might not work for the fire hall. I can't remember if it's the 2nd. We'll check. The fire hall is occupied one Thursday during the month, but we can't remember.
If we can have it here, we should have it here. Oh, well, we could move it to the following week. There's also a select board meeting then, the 16th. Is that too late for you?
I think we better get on it sooner than the 16th of August. I really do. I mean, we're...
Any other future agenda items?
What did we decide about holding an information session for the community?
Well, that's next on the agenda for the assessor portion.
What I was gonna say, we wanted to add that to an agenda item also. We're moving on for a future agenda.
It is on the agenda.
It is on the agenda.
So hearing none, we'll move right on to the next item. Business item, Board of Assessors, discussion proposed training on revaluation and abatement process.
So I guess this was right, saying we should ask? Yeah, the community on a future agenda item. On the previous topic. Well, I think we should, we should invite the community to come and hear how the cards or how their taxes were changed, how the revow was, what they should be looking for if they're uncertain on how the property cards, what the, how the information is presented on year-over-year on the property cards, so that they feel confident. We had a gentleman at the last meeting who realized his property card said his, was changed to deep water. So we need to teach the community what's changed and how they can determine their status of taxation, fair or not.
Who will be doing the teaching and answering questions?
Well, that takes me to a loaded question because I actually thought we, when we terminated a staff position and went to a contract position, I actually thought that was gonna put somebody on staff on a regular basis. So I don't, I don't have an answer to that because I really don't know where that went also.
My concern is that we hold a hearing or a meeting, whatever you wanna call it. That's all well and good. But if there's nobody here who can really answer the complicated questions, or if it becomes very specific about certain property issues that only affect one property taxpayer, the meeting may not be very effective.
So I, I know when this initial process came out, we received an email from Justin Hennessy asking for us to have an information session. And he's an assessor over in Housen. So, and I know we've got a resident who is also, Juanita is fluent in the taxation process. I don't know if either one of them would be prepared to help in that. We could certainly reach out and ask that question. But I think we owe it to our community to provide an educational forum for them to understand. And you even brought up with your old ad, how do we help these people see what's different and changed and make sure that they feel confident in our system? So as, as a town administrator, I guess I look for you for guidance on that.
I'm gonna have a hard time. I think Parker Appraisal couldn't be present, it would be hard because if they did this, we really need their feedback. I think having Juanita or somebody else. We need to know what they did, what the process was.
I agree with that. I mean, she posed a question. I don't, maybe we have Parker Appraisal, but it's my understanding that, you know, the mistakes that were made, I think you said in a previous meeting, Christine, that the mistakes that were made on these property cards is on them without cost to us to correct. Is that...
Yes, that's correct.
So then you should probably be here for the meeting.
And then we don't wanna get them here for a meeting with just two people showing up.
Well, if we put it at enough time, you know, we're chipping away. February 28th is our 180 days for the revow that Locksies in. So if we keep putting it off, we're doing a disservice to our community. I think we reach out to Parker Appraisal and ask them when they have time. And they put enough information out. Carly's got a great system to share with the community. We put it on our fatness lit-up sign out here. And we do the best we can to educate our community.
I'm concerned that if we have that meeting, people will come with their property cards and want Parker to look at their property.
And we say, we say the very beginning of it, that's not gonna happen here. And you address that. But you teach them what's different year-over-year on a property card, on how they determine what's changed. I think, because the cards are completely different, look completely different. And what they can, and if they see that the changes aren't significant and they're comfortable with it, right, they don't even have to come in and ask for an abatement. But I don't think a lot, I think so many people have no idea what to look at to even decide if they should have an abatement.
My next question, though.
That was a question, but what's the benefit to having a big group meeting as those residents just coming into the town office and asking? Because I have had that conversation with many people where they've come down and I've sat with their specific property card. What's the benefit to having a group meeting?
I would like to hear from Parker Appraisal who received $150,000 to do this revow process on how these mistakes happened. What, did they not hit up 150,000?
So you want to go before a firing squad?
Maybe, I mean...
It doesn't seem like a good idea if that's what you're asking.
So again, is a percentage of people who are reaching out to you still minimal?
Yes, and they're very kind and professional in their approach.
But I also don't think people understand how their cards have changed. Has your dad come in?
No, he's not.
Well, see, that's unfortunate. I feel it's unfortunate that your dad's not gonna address you.
Well, we've also, Suzanne, we've also had people come in and say things to the effect of, Susan Anderson told me to come in and get some papers. I don't really know what I need.
I said, "If you have questions, ask."
And that's not helpful either.
I said, "Ask for the property cards if you have a question about your taxation." That's what they should be looking at. Their property cards.
I'm concerned that we're putting, there's talk in the community that's putting erroneous information out there that is creating unnecessary concern. We need time as an administrative staff to put a process into effect to get through this year post-revow and to make adjustments during this year to make sure that Westbach has a process that works effectively moving forward. We've had a number of changes. Not only did we have our first revaluations since 2007, which is a big deal on its own. We changed software programs. We had a one-year stabilization program with a faulty software fix that made it not reflect on our tax bills. We've had a perfect storm of challenges that we are dealing with internally. And we're capable and we want to help the taxpayers. And when they come in, we do help them. And I'm not sure that our town attorney will want the select board saying, "Hey, you know, have all your taxpayers come out and tell them to fill out abatements." That's really not an effective way to deal with it.
So the longer we wait for this process, when you say you need time, we are six weeks in to that timeline that Locksies in on February 28th for this community, that that's the bill they can't abate past that. So the longer we put this off, is the longer time that our residents don't have a chance to correct any errors. And if we, and I'll be the first to say, when I looked at my card, and from last year to this year, I saw mistakes that it's on me that I didn't check it. There's, from last year. But the mistakes this year have nothing to do with me and the changes that were happening to my cards. So I think that we need, we need to, I, I don't, I don't understand the hesitancy. And you know, if only 10 people come to the meeting, terrific, that means the rest of the community's fine. But we shouldn't put it off and pretend that it's, it's not gonna happen. Let the people come if they want to.
There is a process in place. People can come in to the office. I don't think we need another meeting. I think people, I think we need to give people credit if they have questions. They know where to ask them. If there's a problem that can be documented, it can be fixed. If there's, if there's an egregious fault, it can be corrected. There, there is no need for hysteria.[1701.18] And there needs to be, under the new system, as it develops, there needs to be a process. And if the town office is going to be handling the day-to-day stuff of assessment, they need to be free to put that in place. If at some point we want to have a meeting that says, this is how taxes are figured, that's different from having people come looking to have their own individual problems solved at a general public meeting. And I don't believe that people will not come with their questions in the same way that tonight was candidate's night, but we ended up talking a lot about the rebound. People have questions about their own cards. Let them come to the town office. Let them make their concerns known. Let them have that reviewed by the assessing company. And then there is a process where people can simply and easily ask for a rebate. You know what I'd like to review, Suzanne, that I think would be very helpful going in the future? Is just having nights where we have, I guess, called informational meetings.
Absolutely.
And it can be on rebounds, it can be on the school budget.
Public forums.
Yeah, well, and after hours.
Forward, that would be something good to implement for the citizens of Westbach. It doesn't have to, it can be anything we think they may have questions, concerns, issues about, and just have more of a...
And we can serve pie.
Right. This way we're a proactive rather than a reactive.
Right. And I think after hours is key, not everyone come here during the day. If they can't leave their job to do this, I think, and I'm not the first one to ask for this meeting. Justin Hennessy proposed that to the board right after the tax bills came out. So it's out there by other people as well. And I don't see, I still think we should have, it's a disservice if we get closer to February 28th, we don't address the concerns. And if only 10 people come, then only 10 people have significant concerns. Terrific. We can fix those in a two-day abatement process if it takes that long. But I think we can figure out who has questions, and that will lead to who needs abatements.
And I think if there's 10 people, those 10 people could go work with our administrative staff.
Absolutely. But we'll find out at that time. We say, oh, they're going to come with their property cards. If they're coming with their property cards, they have questions. And that's at least addressing half of the battle. If they have a question, they'll know now what the process is to fix their question. But right now, we haven't given them the forum or the opportunity to even understand the process.
On the website. I was on the website today. Right at the top it says, get questions.
And every select board meeting is an opportunity. And people have showed up.
I agree with Kathy what she said here. I think we should, I would love to see, I think it was great the amount of people we had here tonight at candidate night. I would love to see that at every select board meeting. And I think, you know, in reference to what you just talked about, I'd love to have a lot of career night or whatever, where all of the committees that we have in this town have the opportunity to share for people to get engaged and involved in this community. I think it's important that we help people become part of this community a little bit deeper.
So what's your pleasure with the meeting? I need some kind of formal direction so that it doesn't come up again.
I personally think that an educational meeting about any topic should happen after the period of assessment is over, the abatement period, and that we have, that the town office continue with this process that they have set up and have made readily available, with the possible exception of maybe we could have some Thursday evening extended hours between now and Christmas, with compensatory comp time given to the town employees so that if people are working, they might have the opportunity. I don't know what that does for the people who work the 11 to 7 shift. It might extend hours might be helpful.
Kathy, what are your thoughts on it?
I just don't think there's a whole lot we can do at this point in town. I've been down to town hall a couple of times. The people that come into town, Carly, Julie, Christine, they're really doing wonderful work. And again, I just think going forward, we just, thank God we don't have to need another rebound next year. But I think maybe, I don't know, if we could have a sign up for a training and bring all these people who don't have their property cards and go over their property cards and what they need. You know, more informational, more, it's hard to do anything. You know, these people come to this meeting, they don't have their property cards, and they don't know what we're talking about. How well is it going to be? It needs to be well organized.
But why did I ask for the fact then? Why did the training after the rebound, they had a chance to?
Because there's a whole...
I'm sorry, I'm done speaking, Kathy.
Because it's just, from what I'm hearing, it's a small, minute, but we don't have group of individuals, and they have been working very hard. And that gentleman that come last week, I don't know what we can do for him.
But how sick, he was so frustrated.
He was very frustrated.
And I felt horrible for him, and to find out that that emotional element was really from changing the deep water and tidal water. And so that's the thing that we could, if people see that and they just understand, oh, this is where I look on my card to understand if my title has changed, or my square footage has changed, or what element could have an effect on their valuation. I think that in itself could bring, you know, an acceptance of what their tax bill is. A lot of people don't get it.
Well, I don't accept my tax bill if I'm getting, I've got to pay you.
I don't know if this helps at all, but I know a lot about what goes on in this town because of committees I've served on and the effort I make to stay... Tonight, I learned for the first time that there is such a thing as a property card.
A tax card.
I have a tax bill, but I didn't know there was a property card that describes...
How your bill.
How, what went into that bill.
And that's a disservice, I think, that we haven't...
Well, but...
It's a disservice if you don't ever come to a meeting too and find out stuff.
But so I'm still trying to figure, how do we get people? How do we tell them what it is? How do we tell them how to help them? You know, to whose, I mean, I don't know. I'm trying to figure out what's best. And when the people call me, I say, go get your property card. It'll tell you the story of what your taxes are. I don't know how else to tell them. That's what it's based upon.
And the staff is very capable of providing that and discussing it with them if they come to the town office. I think it would be a disaster to have half the people that come to the meeting you're asking for and not have a property card, not know any of that, and just go back crazy trying to get some relief. I just don't think that's constructive.
So how do you suggest we get that message out to them then? You found out tonight, how would you?
Go to the website.
If it's on the website, I don't...
How else can you get people?
Nelson, do you have any thoughts on it?
I know a lot of people who don't use the website, so they don't see it. There are Uber folks in town that don't use a computer, they wouldn't have any idea.
And what do you think we can...
And they won't know about the meeting either.
Madeline's been trying to speak here. The time to have an informational meeting about taxation is in the lead-up to the budget meeting, whether it be in November of next year or May, depending on the results of this referendum. Because not only do people not generally know about the property card, I think a lot of people do not understand, I certainly didn't before I began to serve on the board, how it was that the budgets were arrived at, how our votes at town meeting impact the budget, how, what's the process of commitment? Commitment, I never heard of commitment. And how that bill, not just the particulars of what is on your property card, but how, once you buy that house or once you rent that house, how does your tax get figured on the value, what goes into that bill? It's not just what's on the property card, it's on the expenses that people in town decide that we are going to have. It depends on what the state laws are about how much we can put aside for abatements. It's a very complex thing. And if people need to understand their tax bills, we need to have the information out there, not only about the bill itself. We need to have the information about what the whole process is. And that, I think, is a worthwhile informational meeting that will actually help people to understand how their vote or lack of vote impacts what the result is finally when you get your bill in September. It's not just a one-off. It's a whole year-long process that's continually worked on. And all of the expenditures in the town are based on the projected budget that we vote on. So all of that control happens way before we get the tax bills. And that's the piece that people, I think, I certainly didn't understand. I've lived in I don't know how many communities over the years. I never knew what my tax bill consisted of until I was here and had to be part of the process. So that's the information that people need, not just about, oh my God, I got this huge tax bill.
It's not just a tax bill, it's a valuation. I think we're mixing things up here. So the value is, the taxes that the town generates as a whole, what feeds the mill rate and how we spend our money. But the property card is an individual valuation on the property. Has nothing to do, that has nothing to do with how we spend our taxes. Our mill rate is decided how we spend, how we generate the money from the valuation of the card. And in reference to when you say they came to the meeting, we could have a sample card, a 2022 card and a 2023 card, and show them face up what they would look like. Here's what the cards look like generically. We're not going to discuss any individual tax here tonight or any property card. We're going to show you how the cards year over year have changed. And if you feel that your taxes are accurate, terrific, you don't have to do anything further. If you have questions, go and request your cards from the town hall. And it's that simple. Because there's two different things. And you have to, to see the valuation change, you have to compare 2022 to 2023. It's that simple. And we could show that two cards face up, hand out a sample, and no one's going to have, they, we're not going to discuss any individual property tonight.
And that's assuming, pardon me for interrupting, that's assuming that the 2022 cards were all accurate, and they weren't.
It's, I'm showing, I'm teaching change year over year. I'm not talking about the accuracy before 2022. I'm teaching what changed in this valuation process.
So I've heard two things, and we don't have any motions or any seconds. I'm hearing that Suzanne would like a meeting right away. Madeline would like to do a more later approach. Is there any seconds on any, is there any?
I'll refresh my motion. I move that we have a town meeting allowing residents to come and understand the valuation process and how the cards have changed year over year on how the information's presented, not just the values in the card. The card and the layouts are very different. You have to search for information. Teaching them how to look at their own property cards and feel confident that the town has valued their property accurately. Has nothing to do with taxation. It's valuation. That's simple. So I move that we have a meeting with a sample, two card up, year-over-year representation. Parker Appraisal participates at it. We do it in the evening so people can come here after work. And I would love that there's only 15 people in the audience. And we can put it to rest once and for all. And I think we should do it sooner than later because it's, the closer we get to February 28th, they don't get a chance to have an abatement. So there's no point in waiting if that's the process. So I move, I don't think that's too long, I guess, isn't it? I move that we have...
So I'm going to show you, I'm ignorant on this subject, and I'm going to put it right out here right now. If they don't ask for an abatement this year, can they ask for an abatement next year?
But they still pay this year's taxes.
Yeah, I get that.
Yes, some of them are stabilized, so there's that factor too.
Well, and I guess there's also...
And corrections can be made anytime.
So Steve, you brought up a topic that you requested changes to your card, and then they weren't implemented. And so here's the problem. These people have said, oh, I asked for my changes, they already made it. I have the correct tax bill. And then all of a sudden, his property card comes back out, and the request that he made for change was not changed, so therefore his bill is incorrect.
We understand that.
Even though he addressed, I'm sorry?
He filed for a...
But my point is though, the people that made a request for changes from Parker Appraisal did not get implemented. They're under the assumption that they were, and they're like, oh, I guess I owe this. And you're a perfect example of that process.
I'll just make a note that subsequently I queried Parker Appraisals, and they did make the changes. However, now I have to go through the abatement process to get those changes.
Because it's after the...
But that's only because I...
You asked them prior to commitment to make the changes. They were not made.
How will this meeting correct that, though?
Well, it's teaching, the part of this sharing that the people had a request, and they are under the assumption that Parker Appraisal input their changes. If he didn't look at the card, he would assume that the same thing, that their commitment to make the change happened, and it didn't. So now he's going to have an abatement.
Okay, do you have any more?
Just to, sorry, not to interrupt, but if someone receives their tax bill on the top, it shows the value. So if someone had received their proposed valuation, challenged it, and then they got the tax bill with that same valuation, that is how they would know that those changes weren't made. Not that everyone's going to pay attention, but if someone at home is watching this and they're thinking, gosh, how can I tell? The easiest way is to look at your tax bill at the top to look at the land and building values and see if those sound correct from the discussion you had with your representative.
All right, we're not getting any consensus on this. I'm going to make a motion on the table. One second. I'm here.
Can't keep it public.
I don't think, you know, to me, the problem today is we can't get anybody to pay attention to read or come to a meeting. It seems to me that this would involve time and expense, that the best way to cover your butt and to give everybody an opportunity is to write a letter to every tax person who got a bill and say, we realize that there's great lack of understanding on how we achieve this bill for your taxes. And here is a short commentary on the whole thing, and tell them about the tax page. And tell them if they want to follow through, town office.
I think that's a terrific idea. I do. I think if we educate the community as to what the process is for those that aren't here, aren't watching this, aren't paying attention, I think we owe them an explanation because there's been so many questions.
Oh, but that's it. But if you give them the opportunity once in writing to their mailing address, but they get their tax bill, that's it. They've got a chance.
That might be in the short run, a more beneficial approach than a meeting where people are going to come and just ditch and moan and complain.
And whine.
And whine. And you're not going to be able to, and if you say at the beginning of the meeting, well, we're not going to talk about any individual tax issue.
So they're going home.
They're not going to be happy. They're going to go away mad.
But at least, but I'll say that's the devil's advocate to that. At least we figured out how many people have questions, and they don't come to town hall.
No, you haven't, because there aren't going to be but at best 5% of the people who come to the meeting. My point is if you're given the information at their legal address when they get their bill, they have the information, they can act on it. If they're too lazy or too dumb or don't give a rat's ass, then they've had their chance.
I'll be honest.
Leave, leave, leave. Okay.
Let me make another public comment. I was, I did not understand when you switched from having an employee assessor that had office hours that you could come in and ask questions of. That I thought, I did know, I got noticed that if you had questions about your tax bill, call and make an appointment. I was at a meeting where somebody said, man, they're being slammed with people who come to ask these, the assessors, questions. I said, I'll wait a two or three weeks.
I have a huge regret not extending our commitment. If I could do it all over again, we would not have done it in a window of a week only. I absolutely regret that commitment.
Because I waited a couple of weeks. I came in and talked to Christine, and she said, oh, no, they're not going to be here anymore. I thought they would be in the office half day a week for a period of time.
But that's not what the letter said.
But I thought that we were, I thought we had an employee, I was an employee, a staff person.
The letter didn't say that, I know. But I thought when the rush was over, that there were still going to be some office hours for somebody to come in and sit down and talk to them. And when I phoned Christine, she says, no, that's not what's going to work. You need to send me an email. I'll forward it to them, and they'll respond. And my co-owner of our property has done that, but we haven't heard anything back.
Not yet, but we're going to talk about that tonight too.
Okay, I'll shut up then.
I have a couple of more assessing items to cover. First of all, when you set the mill rate, you didn't actually sign the commitment. So we need to have that signed. Julie said, make sure you have that signed.
Can we undo the commitment and redo it?
Sadly, no.
Seriously.
I think it's a huge big trouble. I think it's, I think it's a big trouble.
The high horns of that one. Well, could you see us not signing? I think I'd find a place to hide.
And you smell a can of worms.
Okay, it'd be time to move. To the property circle.
Probably the driveway.
While we're waiting for all the signatures, just let me note that there's a lot of emphasis on the property card. However, there are two additional notes. One, hidden within the property card are a lot of subjective judgments. Quality of the building, quality of the land, a few other subjective quality factors which one could argue about. So there really are subjective things in there that are not obvious initially. So it's not, should not be regarded as a, a total easy black-and-white thing. In addition, one could question their methodology, but that requires much more detailed discussion. But just note that on the property card, there's a lot of hidden subjective.
Christine, at our last meeting, we talked about getting that, what my friend always called the rating.
Yeah, we don't have that yet.
Because that's exactly what he's talking about. Is there, do you think a timeline, we're going to have that?
I'm not sure, but Parker Appraisal is planning on working on West Bath's items that need to be reviewed the week of October 16th. There are currently 17 abatements in the queue, along with some other inquiries like Bob just mentioned, that they are going to review during that week. Your October 19th meeting is occurring during that week. If you keep that October 19th meeting, you will not have time to review what they came up with. I'm wondering if you might consider moving your next October meeting to the 26th to give you time to actually review the seven that need to be looked at. Okay, will you be there earlier in the week?
I will.
Because I want to give you at least the weekend to see what they came up with. And it's just, it's seven that need to be dealt with because of the 60-day deadline for abatements.
I leave on the 26th and come back, so, yeah. That's, I can, I can do it earlier that week, but I can't do it later in the week.
If, either Monday or Wednesday would work. If you and Kathy can meet at that time. But Suzanne, that also means that Madeline won't be reviewing the abatements. So I know that it was important to you at the last meeting that you won't be here. We are dealing with a deadline for these seven abatements.
And Wednesday, the 25th is my resources. So what day are we proposing is the, the 23rd?
23rd would be preferable.
At what time?
Whenever works for you and Kathy.
Monday, 23rd. I can't, I, I mean, I can't do it in the morning. What's your schedule? You can't do after 2:00 or not after 2:00? You can do that. Let me say 5 o'clock on the 23rd.
Okay, and we'll plan for the town office at 5 o'clock on the 23rd. Thank you. I think that'll be enough time for them to do the review and get that information to me so I can send it out to you. So you can at least take a look at it before you consider their recommendations.
And so can we, I would like to get a look at the, I want to really understand the dates that are coming. I do want to see those values and grade the systems.
Yeah, I'll, I'd ask for it, I'll see what I can get them.
Because if we're going to start this process, I want to really understand what that, that is.
So there will not be a meeting on the 19th, it will be on Monday, the 23rd at 5:00 p.m.
Anything else?
That's the town hall, right?
Yes.
Anything else, Steve?
Nope.
Okay, we need to go in executive session pursuant to 1 MRS, Chapter 13, 405, 6A, to discuss personnel matters.
But you're welcome to put your chairs in the closet. Just say, Ellen, we don't have to move on.
Can I go off the front door?
Yes.